All right, well, thank you. Welcome to this morning's meeting of the Implementation Committee. We've got the agenda pulled up here and we're gonna just work through a couple of, a couple of things. I'm looking at the wrong agenda on my screen now. And, and go from there this morning. So I'm gonna let Shannon take over.
Sure. So first, we're just gonna, kind of review where everybody is. Monday night, the Traffic and Housing Committee recommendations were presented to council for discussion. And hopefully, City Council will ratify those at their next meeting on July 6. And this is my plan going forward, that I think the Land Use Group and the Business Group, their recommendations should be ready this week or next, so that they are in time to go to Planning Commission for their July meeting. City Council, July 19th, and to be ratified August 2nd, so we can be moving on with those. And the University Group will meet later this week, and hopefully, we'll have enough consensus and we'll be able to, to meet enough in the next couple of weeks to get them either on the same plan, or just a week or two behind. But my goal is to get this phase of just getting these recommendations ratified, finished really by the end of August. Do y'all have any questions or thoughts on that? Okay. And my thought is, after City Council ratifies the recommendations, I will take those and integrate them with the comp plan, kind of more specific goals or action items for those areas, and go back to the work groups and see if they have anything they want to add. And then we'll work on how, who needs to work on those moving forward, whether it be staff or smaller task force-like groups. We'll also, at that point, kind of create a, a report card-like snapshot, kind of categorizing those items as short-range, mid-range, long-range. So we'll have a checklist to look at it, how we're doing accomplishing those. And then my hope is, if we stay on track, this group will transition into monthly meetings in September. So we'll meet, if it still works for everybody, the first Wednesday of every month from 8 to 9 throughout the fall, and then in 2022, transition to quarterly meetings. Does that seem to work for everybody?
Sounds good to me.
Sounds good to me.
Yes.
Okay. So we've done a couple of things there. I guess next, Bob, do you want to lead a discussion on the Strategic Ordinance?
Yeah, so as you all probably know, in the process of the reading of the Strategic Ordinance, Strategic Ordinance Number One, we got a lot of feedback from property owners in downtown that are less than two acres and concerned about taking away the right for residential, or some right for residential. So if you had less, if you, the way that the Strategic Ordinance was put forward, that two-acre minimum for a PD in a commercial district, basically, took away any ability or any path for a property owner that has less than two acres to bring something forward that proposes residential. So what is going on now is that we have, on the 29th, which is Tuesday, right? Planning Commission is meeting to discuss the ordinance that we have sent back to them now, which basically takes it back. It's, it's what we sent forward, and it takes out that two-acre requirement. Shannon, can you pull that up on your screen? I think that document is in the folder. Let's see here. Sorry. In the folder that says ordinances and codes, or something like that in Clemson Next, it's the third, I think there's three documents in there. It's the third one. On my screen, it was on the right. And I just accidentally shut the Have you found that yet?
Hang on one second. Do you want what Planning Commission is actually looking at? Because that's not what
Yeah, if you have that, if you have that version, that would be great. I just, okay, I just emailed you a, a version as well.
Okay.
Okay, so if we, yeah, go, go to the top real quick.
So this is the version that was approved by Planning Commission?
Right. And so what we coming down through that, the things that we had talked about were right here, that we're taking the mixed use as a conditional use out of the, if you go back up just a bit there, okay, right there. Mixed use is coming out. All right, so then the, if you scroll down to the next, just right there, here's where it's another, the new version that's going to the Planning Commission will have this taken out. It'll be a PD shall encompass a minimum of four acres when adjoining solely by R-20 or R-12 districts. And so that takes out the two acres. So the version that's going to Planning Commission will have the two acres taken, taken out. And so basically, what that does is, if it's in an R-12 or R-12, the R-12 or R-20 district, then it takes four acres. Now, if you see that, you know, language, locations across the street or alley are considered to be adjoining. So downtown on College Avenue, for example, where it backs up to Riggs and Shroade, that would still work for a less than four-acre PD there, because it is adjoining other commercial property across the street, if that makes sense, on College Avenue. All right, so that's gonna be one change that's going, is that two acres is taken out, and it's only a minimum of four acres. And that's really when it's just if someone bought, you know, four acres worth of land in Monaco Estates, they could come forward with a PD there. All right. And then the other thing, if you can scroll to the bottom of this, and I really want to talk about this when we get the Land Use Group together. Are there other things? Because Planning Commission is going to have the opportunity to amend or add to this on the 29th, if they, if they so choose, before it comes back to, back to City Council and for a second public hearing on, on this. So it, can you scroll up a little bit? Because I have everyone's pictures across the bottom there. So those, those things in red at the, at the bottom are what we originally sent forward. Like I said, we can talk about this a little bit in the Land Use and Development group. But one of the ideas that's been kicked around a little bit is to, you know, whether it's guidance or preference like these, like we're talking about here, do we, do we want to set some standards that may provide an easier path, or a clear path, like maximum of 35 feet? You know, put in any of the things that we've talked about with retail space, like a set aside amount of money per square foot for outfit that the developer would provide. We could, we could, we could make those recommendations that today, if we have any other ideas that we would like Planning Commission and Council to consider, outside of these original things that we set, set forward. So that's the discussion. And again, we can, we can get into this, since everybody on this committee is also in Land Use and Development. We can do that as part of that meeting in 15 minutes. Fran?
Yeah, and just, just to make sure that I'm on the same page, and I think we are. So this would not mean that if they did these things, they would by right be able to build the residential, right? I mean, it still has to go for approval through the PD process. So it's still a process. It doesn't give them the right to do this, but gives them a, a, a fast track or a framework that would probably be acceptable.
Yeah, this, this, you know, again, we could give some other ideas up here that would, that would help guide what would be acceptable in addition to these. Because these are pretty, these are pretty not loose, but they're, they're loosely defined, you know? Vision goals, size, character, use, architectural standards outlined for those districts, identified as catalyst areas, you know? We don't have those yet. So that's why we might want to put in some specifics right now in the short term. Any thoughts there? That we want to talk about before we get with the larger group here in a few minutes? If not, let's, let's do this, Shannon. Let's, um, let's move on. You kind, you kind of covered AC and D already, didn't you, on the agenda? All right, so keep that in the back of your minds. Let's do the old business here and talk about that. And then I want to talk about upcoming meetings for the next couple of weeks as well.
So the old business is moving forward with holding, Elaine, do you have something you want to add?
Yeah, I just wanted, before we go on, I'd like to clarify, go back to the part where we took out the two acres. And when it says a PD must be a minimum of four contiguous, when they're joined solely by R-12, R-20. And, and Bob, you mentioned about along College Avenue, so commercial would be counted as across the street. So, so we're not looking out for your neighborhood, because they, they directly abut that commercial side on, on that side of college.
Right, right. And, you know, but it's, it's it's, it's status quo, though, because, you know, it's, it's status quo in a way, actually, it, it opens up the door where smaller PDs would happen rather than larger PDs because of the two-acre minimum being taken out for those properties. Because right now, today, that's what, you know, a, a 10 acre, if there was 10 acres there, a 10-acre PD could come forward, and it, and it still could under this. So it's not, it, it's status quo, but opens up the door where maybe, like Trent Allen's property is a PD in and of itself, and you get some of that smaller-scale development than someone trying to get Trent's, the drugstore, towels, the, you know, that house that's there, and Monahan and Nick's office, and tries to do, let, let's say that's six acres, and tries to do a massive six-acre PD. So it, it, it keeps it, it is status quo. And if we have tighter PD regulations, and in a PD, we can approve or not approve. It opens up the door for some of that smaller-scale development as PDs along there, rather than everyone going for massive, as massive as they can.
So I, I just want to make sure we've got the language right. We've got the information in there correctly. I don't want to hear a council member, like I heard in the past, not current council, by the way, but hear a council member say, if I'd known that's what that garage was gonna do to east of college, I wouldn't have, I wouldn't have voted for it. And I'm talking about Earl Finley Garage. Yeah. So I, I, I want to make sure we're closing any loopholes that would allow something like that to, to come infringing on a neighborhood again.
Yeah. Yeah.
And does that, does that do that?
Well, was Earl, was Earl a PD?
Yes.
Yeah. See, that's, that's one of the things that we would need to put in, you know, you gotta think about that in a PD regulation. But again, I mean, that was just, that was bad, you know? Again, that was, that was a bad approval process to allow that to happen. So, so yeah, I mean, I think we do, you know, we need to think about those things that where higher-density development meets lower-density development that we have, you know? And garages might be one of those things, but you know, like right now, where it's, you can't have balconies. You're supposed to have, like, zero lot line lighting. You're supposed to have, you know, there's, there's setback and screen, you know, landscaping requirements. And maybe that is one that we would, we would put in there as well. That the art, you know, and I don't, you know, that would be something that again, again, that we would, you know, need to discuss how that, how that looks.
Okay.
But yeah, I think that, I think that's important to, to think through.
Okay, thank you.
So yeah, let's have, let's have that discussion with the, with the Land Use Group, and make sure that one stays on our, our list there. All right.
I was on my camera, my phone.
Anything, anything else?
My microphone was on.
It's still on, Elaine. Hey, Elaine, your microphone's still on.
Dang it, sorry.
Yeah. Tell, tell, tell Roy to stop saying bad things about the rest of us. All right, the, the old business. Shannon, tell us about the, what's going on there.
So we're gonna have a public meeting, July, Tuesday, July 20th. It's gonna be three locations, three different times. I'm gonna send up a sign-out sheet, send out a sign-up sheet, I said that the wrong way. Send out a sign-up sheet to council, so y'all can pick what time and location, if you want to join, so we can make sure we have a three or fewer council members at all of those. I'll send it out to the Implementation Committee. So if you guys want to pick a time that you guys want to, want to join, we're gonna be in the morning, early, outside. So I think we're gonna be 8 to 10, or 9 to 11, it's early, either at Nettles Park or Abernathy Park. So that day at Nettles Park is the last day of a baseball series. So we might end up moving to Abernathy. I liked Nettles because it was flat, and there was lots of parking, so it was easily accessible. But I don't really want to, I'm gonna talk with Jay, see how many teams they anticipate being there. We might move that to Abernathy. It'll be lunchtime.
What about Clemson Park as well? You know, I mean, because there is a lot of parking there with, with the church, would have no problem with people parking there on a Tuesday morning.
Yeah, that's a great idea. And I like that, because it's, there's a lot of parking, and it's easily accessible, and there's the covered shelter.
Yeah.
Okay, I can move that to Clemson Park.
I would check on that.
Let me check and see if they're planning to be doing any work out there.
Okay.
Um, because I know that's on the ticket for July out there as well. And then over lunchtime, we'll be at the community room at the fire station. And then after work, we'll be at Little John. So, and that's just, I'm gonna print some things out, work with Sarah, get some blowups of the pictures for the maps and things like that. And it's just a drop-in. People can come and ask their questions, find out how to get more involved, give us their feedback.
All right, so look for a sign-up sheet with the for those information sessions on the 20th coming out, and we will make those so that there won't be more than two or three council members, and two or three planning commissioners at the same, at the same ones, okay? All right. Anything else? Go ahead.
I was just gonna say, could we look at our schedule for the next couple of weeks and see who's gonna be in here? I'm a little worried about the, the week of the 4th, if we maybe want to take that week off, and then what everybody else's schedule is, the week, the next few weeks, if we want to take a couple of weeks off of meeting.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm going to be, I am not going to be here next, I'll be here following, but I'm not gonna be here next Wednesday, so. But if we are gonna be getting some information coming forward for the Implementation Committee from Land Use and Development, we should probably go ahead and have a meeting. And I could probably, I could probably call in and, and be on the phone, potentially, would be my hope. So we're gonna be on the road, and I, and I'm hoping we are out the door by 8 o'clock next Wednesday morning. So if we are, we're in the car, I can, I can call in for that. But the week of the 4th, do we want to definitely plan on not having a meeting that week? And we may, depending on we'll, we'll need to see what, where we are. Next week's meeting might just be the Implementation Committee, if we get through the, you know, Land Use and Development recommendations today, as far as moving this forward. And we could have a quick meeting just to say, yes, we're good to go, or we could even do that by email.
If you guys, you're all involved in that committee. If you want to do that via email, or give your input today, while we're finalizing those today, I can consider that done for that, those, that list of recommendations.
Okay. Well, let's, let's do that. Let's see where we are, let's see where we are today. And if we, if we inland use and development, if we get through the recommendations that we're gonna forward to council, we can just approve, we can talk about just approving those via email, and we'll go from there and potentially have a, a two-week break of these. And it's probably a good time for that, you know, as well. So let's do, let's do that if there's no objections.
The only other thing is, the Business and Economic Group, they might be finalizing their recommendations this week too, but I can certainly email those to you. And we can handle that via email, unless there's a discussion, at which point we can come back to that when we, we come back.
And has the University Group, Group met?
University Group is meeting for the first time on Thursday.
I didn't get any notice of that.
You were on my list. Let me double-check that this morning, Larry.
Well.
I did send it to your, your Google, so hang on, and I'll double-check.
All right, I gotta look, I don't, I, I can't brain, get my brain to, all right, I'll look at it. Let her see at what time? That's tomorrow.
It is tomorrow. It's at 11 o'clock at City Hall. They wanted that to be an in-person meeting.
All right.
I will resend that to you.
Yeah, thank you. All right, um, we will take a pause here. It looks like another couple people, Lynn has joined us. Let's take a
Start recording. Okay.
All right, thank you, everyone, for being here. We'll go ahead and get started, have a couple items today. We want to work through the recommendations and, and make our recommendation that we forward on to council, that they approve or ratify, or accept, you know, ratify the recommendations from the Strategic Plan in the Land Use and Development sections. And then also want to have a discussion about Strategic Ordinance One, that's coming back through Planning Commission on the 29th. And at that meeting, we would have the, they would have the opportunity to make any additions to what we originally sent through with that, we're gonna change one thing, but we'll, we'll get to that. So what I want to do is, let's start with the with the recommendations from the plan, and we'll go with those for a while. But then, at a certain point, I am gonna want to move on to the Strategic Plan Ordinance, because that meeting's coming up on Tuesday. So I want us to have a little bit of time to, to discuss that as well. And then we'll go back to the idea and old business of taking, taking field trip, a field trip, or some speaker ideas. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Shannon to kind of lead us through the recommendations piece, and I'm gonna step away for three seconds.
All right, so I would actually like to get your input. We have gone through these in a lot of detail over the past two or three weeks. Are there any that you guys are uncomfortable with, or that you want to revisit? I feel like we've gone through the housing ones and the overlay districts, and everybody is in agreement with how those are worded right now? Unless I hear otherwise. And then we have some newer ones down here that you guys added last time, under Expand Capacity and Foster Collaboration. So let's talk about these real quick. So consider working with a development consultant to facilitate priority catalyst area project. The last time we discussed, everybody was in agreement on that one. Is that still the case?
Yeah.
Okay. The second two are a little bit more recent. Have the city become a member of the Urban Land Institute, and pursue resources available through that organization. And I looked into that, that's a very reasonable cost. They have a municipal rate. Do you guys want to leave that one in there? And they do have a lot of resources, on-demand webinars, that are relevant to this group. They're on affordable housing and planning, and different land development processes.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Okay. And the third one, Seek Engagement with Clemson Master of Real Estate Development Program. Do you guys want to add any more detail around that?
Just, just a question. Have we checked with them to see if they're okay with that?
What? I, I, no. But I think the seeking doesn't mean engage them, right? So.
Right, but, but I guess I'm just thinking, if, if they say absolutely not, you know, we wouldn't even consider it. We probably don't want to put this on here. If they, you're right, David. If they say, well, yeah, we're certainly ready to talk about that with you, then, then it's, it's worth doing.
Do you want me, there's a number of these that are kind of on the list for the University Group to discuss on Thursday. Do you want me to add that to their discussion? Or kind of take care of this off of the recommendation list, or do you want to leave it on, on your recommendation list?
I mean, I'd say if we want to replace Seek or Pursue with Pursue, but I don't think it commits us to anything. It just says we're pursuing it. And and I don't think it belongs in the University Group, because this is about land use. It's not about relationships with the university. So it's in Clemson. In fact, the Master of Real Estate Development Program is actually in Greenville. So, so so I don't, I don't think it relates to that, that group more than it relates to this group, so.
Okay.
Let me give you the scenario, then I can see happening now. And that's why I think it's always a good idea to me, to at least as a courtesy, run it by groups that are, that are mentioned in our documents. I can see a newspaper reporter looking at this and saying, that's interesting. Let me, let me contact the Masters of Real Estate Development people and see what they think about this. And the answer is, what, what the heck are you talking about? So I mean, I don't, I don't mean agreement. I think at least notifying university people and agencies is a courtesy, if nothing else, before their name appears in, in the print or on the docket of the City Council. I mean, that could be, David, as easy as you. I'm sure you know whoever the chair of this program is. I don't. Just saying, you know, this has come up, and, and we're thinking about doing this, and there's more to come. I just, I think it's a courtesy, but also a little protection when, if they were contacted and they had no idea what, what it was, and then the newspaper article is, they had no idea what it was. I just, I, I don't think there's reason to not do it. If they were contacted and and they had no idea what what it was, and then the newspaper article is, they had no idea what it was. I just, I I don't think there's reason to not do it.
Think the other thing we could do is this might fall as an action item kind of under number one. Um, if that's what you guys are thinking, that this is kind of a. Group that we that consider should consider, the city should consider working with further catalyst areas and redevelopment planning. Um, so I can take it off this official recommendation list, but note it like after these are ratified, that's one of the avenues we could pursue. Under your first recommendation here.
I don't, I I mean, I I see, I see both sides of this. I I don't have a problem with it being on there and seek engagement, but and and. Yeah, maybe we we send a uh, send a uh. Email to whoever the whoever's coordinating that program now and just say, hey, we've talked about this. Uh, it's in our Clemson uh next plan and, you know. We'd simply wanna sit down to see if there's opportunities uh with that program um. Here and I would, I. Yeah. Are you there? Okay, Dave, David, you know, who who is the director of that program?
John Gaber uh is the chair um. And Robert Benedict is the uh is the um, I guess uh. Runs the program up there, uh so um, and I know John has a lot on his hands with a little bit of things going on in our college right now. But I'll reach out to John and Robert and um. Uh, and and see uh, see who uh, see if we get any response. I mean, I mean, sometimes the issue with them is. Um, you know, timing, right? So it's like in our program, if they've got projects underway, when when they could fit us in. Um, and and so, I mean. I don't know that there would be a blanket no, but it's just a matter of when they might be able to engage us and. Uh, and in what capacity? I mean, that'll be a question that they have. Uh, I can tell you that much. Um, so um, you know, are we looking to them as a consultant? Are we looking to them to engage students? Are we looking to them to give us an intern? What, you know, if I'm gonna approach them. You know, that's gonna be the first question that they have, right? So.
Yeah.
So maybe we need to have a debate on what on how we might engage, and we had talked about an intern would be a great person to have on board.
Okay.
But I mean, is there other levels of engagement? I mean, and maybe it's just a matter of exploratory. Discussion with them to see, you know, um, how we might engage them.
Okay.
But I can call, I can call John and I can call Robert and 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 follow up.
Okay. Yeah, and just, you know, if there's two or three ideas about what it might look like, and I totally get that the, you know, that's a lot of those things are gonna be about timing, particularly if we wanted them to do. You know, of of course, doing a project, acting as consultant, those kind of things. Um, yeah, definitely, timing's gonna be an issue there.
I mean, if they were to give us an intern, would we have funding to fund uh an intern?
Put potentially, I mean, we do have some funding um. There, it would be something that we would need to. You know, talk about um. But we do have some Clemson next funding available.
Okay.
I think we'd want.
It looks like we have um. Go ahead. Shannon.
Um, just real quick, and then I see Elaine and Lynn. Um, I think we'd want to define. What are we looking for from them? So are we looking for plans? Are we looking for an intern? What do we? What do you think that intern's role and responsibilities are going to be? Um, I think we'd like to have all of that laid out a little bit more. I don't know, before approaching them even, um, so we know what we want and need, and it's not. Necessarily, if maybe they have something that they want and need, but it might not match up. Um, so we might wanna take a little bit more time to define what we're looking for first. Elaine and Lynn, I don't know who was first.
Uh, it was Lynn first and Elaine.
Okay, I'll wait.
That's okay. I think you answered my questions. Uh, I was going to ask about the the possibility of an intern um. Uh, role in some of this and and I really. Technically, I like the words seek better than pursue, and if we left cut um. Wording in there and uh, if not, I would um delete that. Uh, number three and and consider putting that in there as a part of number one if we did not. Um. Actually, talk to uh someone at the university prior to to uh. Um. Uh, engaging them in conversation, but I think you've answered my questions about that. So go ahead, Elaine.
Thanks, Lynn. Um, so my question is really for David, I guess. Um, I don't wanna limit ourselves. Is that the only program at the university that might be worth pursuing a partnership with?
Well, I mean, obviously, you know, uh, architecture, the community um. Design um center, I mean, those are uh architecture and health. I mean, we've engaged you, right? So, I mean, we've engaged the city uh in the past, so. I mean, that's, that's not uh an issue. Uh, I think. That what we were looking for here was was development. Ideas and innovation and expertise. Um. And it could also be a cross-disciplinary engagement, right? So we could have architecture students, planning students. Uh, Masters of Real Estate Development students. Landscape Architecture students, we could, we could, you know, I mean, it's certainly possible that a cross-disciplinary team could be put together. To assist the city. I mean, the only hesitation I have about specifying what we want out of this is it kind of shuts down the conversation if it doesn't align. With with what they do or or the ideas they can bring to the table of how they might engage, and so. I would say, when I, what I meant when we, I said, seek or pursue was that we sit down with them and have a discussion. About ways in which we could possibly engage them. Um, and uh, and and let the. Termination of how we engage them come out of that conversation, that 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 at that initial meeting. So um, and um. So. I I think that's the first step, I mean, before we define what we're looking for, because we don't. We know some of what we're looking for. We don't even know what we don't know, so. They can fight it. So uh, so uh, so anyway, um. Uh, that would be my approach, and that's how I would pitch it to to Robert and and John uh is to. Come and meet with. This group uh uh and or or leadership in the city. I don't, you know, whoever's appropriate uh. But, you know, the first thing they would wanna do is catch up on where we're all at, right? What's been going on here, and I don't know to what degree they have. I know their MR uh Masters of Real Estate Development and Planning is heavily. Engaged with the city of Greenville. Uh, and you can kind of see the outcomes of some of that, so. Um, so. Uh, that's how I would pitch it to them, to to see if they would be interested in meeting with. Whatever group you tell me to suggest to them and um. And then I can give them a a link to the strategic plan um. And and anything else you want me to share with them.
Thanks, David.
Ken?
Yes, um, hearing uh David's comments. I think including this as number three formalizes this quite a bit, and it's gonna get, like someone mentioned earlier, lots of questions from different um corners. So. Hearing David's last comments about, you know, having the conversation with the folks over in real estate. Uh, or the other programs noted there. It seems to me that this, at this stage, is more suitable for uh item one. With this being uh an area that we would pursue specifically, and then as we have more information from both sides. Then perhaps it at it at that stage is more formal and you could put in a document like this, but until then, I think you're gonna start getting lots of questions. That we don't necessarily have answers to at this point.
Yeah. Uh, that's fine. I'm fine pulling it. Fran? Fran, have you left the building? I think you were next on the list.
Okay, here I am. Um, I guess what I'm saying is a version of what Ken just said, that an alternative would be for number three to say, seek engagement. With relevant Clemson University programs, rather than naming a specific one, which sort of does the same thing as adding it to number two, I think that that then means we would. Go to other places as they come up, because there might be other programs that matter without mentioning them. So I think either way, would would make sense. Number three would. Make the jump out a little bit more, but number two does, has the same result, I think. I mean. Editing number one has the same result, I think.
And I would not use or, though. I mean, because I don't think what we're saying is whatever university programs replace the development consultant.
Right. I like, I like it as number, as number three. Um, so it does pop out, but I also like if we could be a little less specific, if we do, and maybe we say something like, explore opportunities for, you know. Um, explore opportunities uh for partnerships or engagement. With Clemson, with appropriate Clemson University programs.
I agree, Bob. Good suggestion.
Does that work?
Mm-hmm.
That leave, that leaves it open um and. That kind of thing, so. Shannon, you had your hand up as well. I apologize. I jumped over you there.
No, that's okay. I was just gonna say, thinking about how this falls in line with some of the other committees and how they're making recommendations. Leaving it more general, the way you just left number three, Bob, is how the other ones at this stage have left them. And then, so for example, like the traffic group. After these are ratified, that's when. We're going out and reaching out to the people that can make it happen and getting more specific. Um, so I do like, just for consistency across the groups, to either include it in number one or leave it very general the way number three is worded now.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. All right, is everybody okay with that?
Yeah, that's better.
Um, does anybody, um, as far as overall, any other uh comments in relation to these uh recommendations? Elaine, you still have, it looks like you still have your hand up, but you've walked away, so I think you just haven't put it down. Um, all right, any, uh, let's do this this way as far as a vote. Um. Do we, we haven't been doing um motions, official motions, I think, but maybe for this one, we we should. Um, because this is kind of a big one. Uh, and would anyone like to make a motion that uh? We make these recommendations uh. Our official, I don't know how to say this, obviously. Um, make a motion that uh the implementation committee or the land use and development committee. Um. Would like to forward these on to council for adoption.
How about if the motion is that we recommend that council adopt these recommendations from our committee?
That sounds like a great motion, Fran. Does anyone second that?
Second it.
All right, was that David?
Yep.
Okay. Any other discussion? All right, so um instead of voting, I'm gonna say, uh, anyone, if there are any objections. To that motion. Please let me know by. Yelling out, hollering, screaming, stomping your hands and feet. Hearing, hearing none of that, uh, that passes. All right, so um. Are we okay with that since the implementation committee? Was all involved in that vote? Do we wanna uh use that as a uh, as a double vote to uh forward those on? And then we don't have to do that in our in our committee meeting, the implementation committee next week. You wanna make it, does anyone on the implementation committee object to forwarding that on from the implementation committee? Okay, done. Um. So if we have something come forward from the Business and Economic Development Committee for the implementation committee. Uh, we can decide what we need to do with with meeting next week or not. Um, or just uh voting on those by uh by email to forward those on. All right, um. So, back to the strategic plan of ordinance, and if you were in the um. Implementation Committee meeting, uh, what what occurred was when we forwarded the strategic plan ordinance. That took residential out of commercial uses, the feedback that we got from um. Some property owners uh through that process of public hearings and first and the first reading. Um, and it did, it did not pass first reading. Um. But uh, through that process, uh, what we heard was from some of the smaller property owners in commercial areas that own less than two acres. That uh. They had an issue with that, uh, because they have no path forward. Um, if they want to propose residential in um. In commercial areas. So in other words, by not removing that two-acre requirement, um. We've really, you know, somewhat unfairly uh given it up. Property owners and not giving smaller property owners uh a path through through the PD process to move forward. So what's happening is that. The ordinance is going back to Planning Commission on Tuesday, on the twenty ninth. Uh, with basically the version that we put forward, and Shannon, if you can pull that up in a minute. Um, the version that we sent forward, but it takes out. The two-acre requirement in section nineteen five oh three, right there. Actually, go back, go back up. Right there, okay. So the way that the ordinance will read is uh. That PD shall encompass a minimum of four contiguous acres when it joins solely by R twenty or R twelve districts. So uh. Basically, that keeps the, you need four acres when you um. Are in a R twelve or R twenty um area to bring forward a PD. Uh, in other areas now, um, you know, in our commercial districts, you would only. You, you, there's no minimum requirement. You could come forward with a uh PD uh. On a, on a small lot, as long as it has mixed use. So for example. What was it? Well, is that Wells Fargo Bank downtown um next to MH Frank and the Burger Joint?
Yes.
Whatever that bank was, uh, that property owner and developer, he um. Want to move forward is one of the things that he talked about. He did the the building that Gianna's is in in Greenville. And he wants to do a two-floor retail with one floor of a a couple of uh condos on a third floor. He would not be able to bring that project forward, which obviously with two floors of retail commercial, the commercial property. Is a very important part of that for it to be economically feasible. Um. He wouldn't have a path to bring that forward. Um. As just one example, um, because that property doesn't meet the two-acre minimum. Um, so in by by taking the two-acre minimum out, we basically level the playing field for property owners in. That own commercial right now. They still have to come through the PD process. Um, but it's uh. Again, I, in in my opinion, it's a, it's a more fair situation to the uh property owners. Uh, looks like Elaine, have you not lowered your hand or is your hand up for a question? Okay, Dave. Okay, Dave has his hand up. David, if you're talking, I think you might.
Yeah, I was muted. Yeah. All right. So first of all, I was trying to go through this when it was sent out and it's somehow PDF as a photograph, so I can't do my customary red cursor comment thing on it. So you'll have to bear with me since I'm kind of fly, working on the fly. So it looks like.
You have this, you have this in your packet as well. It's in the, it's attached to the bottom of the agenda.
Yeah, I know. That's the one I'm in. It seems to be made of PDF as a photograph. Yeah. So but so the two contiguous acres looks like it's still in here under nineteen five oh three A. Is that, is that, is your plan to strike it out?
Yeah, it's gonna be, it's, it's, it will be taken out for the version that's going to planning commission. We just didn't have that version this morning there. So that two acres, it will read a PD shall encompass a minimum of four contiguous acres when it joins solely by R twenty or R twelve districts.
I mean, well, first of all, if you remember, I think we had some discussion about small properties in downtown, and I thought that might be a concern and limitation of this. And but here's my larger issue is, well, first of all, I think it could be reworded that PDs can be of any size, you know, we can pick the smallest property owner downtown in a in a CM district is the way to maybe phrase that. Okay. And so to me, then that really limits it down to that that area. Okay. Now, the second big fundamental problem I have is the way I'm reading this is the PD is still framed as a zoning ordinance for a piece of property. Okay. And and to me, that is a very limited approach to a PD and that it's particularly acute on small properties in that it should be a design proposal. And that it should be completely reviewed more than a zoning ordinance. Okay. It it can't be written in words and a plat. Okay. It needs to be. It needs, I mean, in my opinion, any PD, but in particularly, these small PDs downtown need to have a complete proposal review in public view because we've experienced bait and switch on PDs. I mean, a PD as a zoning ordinance is a very loose framework for a PD. And we should be able to to examine and 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 rule on the form, the the site development, the 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 character, the 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 buffering, the landscaping, we should have, I mean, they should be coming forward with a proposal if it's particularly in these small properties downtown that that because again, I don't know how many times I have to say it. It's not what you do. And that's what the zoning ordinance is about, what you do. It's how you do it that matters. And and we won't get to how you do it if you if we if we if we define a PD as a zoning ordinance for a particular piece of property.
Okay, I like just just to start there. I do, I like the idea of of limiting that language. So that might be a recommendation that we make that this say, a PD in our commercially zone districts can be of any size. However, a PD must be a minimum four contiguous acres when it joined by R twelve or R twenty. Christine, I think you had your hand up.
Yeah, I think I think there it needs to reference a guideline of some sort so that a developer will have something to go to. And I'd be happy to share my PD that was submitted to the city of Greenville. It, again, these things have a lot of teeth, but somebody coming in needs to know what those teeth are. And their feet will be held to the fire and they'll, there will not be a bait and switch because it has so much teeth.
Right. Yeah, if you, if you don't mind doing that, that would be great. Put that get that to Shannon and she can get that in the drive and maybe we can share that with with planning commission.
Okay.
As well. I remember it. So we also, David, so we have the section I at the end that we had included. I'm gonna go ahead. Ken raised this hand. So Ken, do you want to go ahead?
Well, thanks. I only concur with David's point. I saw a couple of points in the chat. I think it needs to be spelled clearly, spelled out clearly. So property owners and developers are aware. And I like the idea of being open to the public such that the public can get a very good understanding and view of what, you know, is being proposed. And so I like David's idea, especially of this design proposal and spelling it out. I think it has to be spelled out. Otherwise, there will be end around bait and switch, at least the attempts for those kinds of things. So I think it needs to be very clear.
Other comments. Remember, we we also did include section I here. And this is the area that I wanted us to, you know, potentially, this might be where we can put some of those things that we think are, we need to outline as recommendations to move forward to planning mission. Fran?
Yes, I think, and Bobby just sort of alluded to this, I think there are two different things going on here, though, that we need to be aware of. The first is the two acre thing, which is absolutely crucial because if we don't redo or eliminate that, and I like David's wording, actually, the danger would be nothing would be passed at all through council and we'd be right back where we are. So I think that piece might be crucial in terms of council approving no residential in commercial CM districts except through PD. So I think that piece is crucial. The second piece, I think, what, you know, what's on up now is exactly what is the process and the content requirement for the PD so that it's stringent, it's difficult, and has public input. And I don't know, Bob, that it wouldn't be better to make this as two separate items for the PC, the first being the two acres, which I think hopefully we can agree on pretty quickly. And then the second being the specific requirements, which probably is going to take more than one meeting to build that out and have that where we want it to be. But I think the two acres is a fairly crucial item to get to PC in in time for the next meeting, if at all possible.
Yeah, I I agree with that as well, that we 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 definitely you know, I mean, that's going forward from council. Anyway, David?
Well, I just wanted to, you know, recognize that I realize there's a fundamental difference between PD, let's say, like Patrick Square, that's developed incrementally over time. Okay. Versus a PD on a relatively constrained downtown piece of property that is more than likely going to be built and should be built in total at one time, right? So so, you know, maybe, and I don't know whether this is possible, whether there can be different standards for PDs in different contexts. So a PD like Patrick Square, obviously, some of the property has not even been developed yet, right? So although that's getting pretty small. But but on these, on these properties downtown, you know, we want to have a good sense of what the total build out is going to be right from the the get go, right? So so, you know, one of the you know, things, another way to approach the PDs downtown is to is is that the PD is contingent upon an architectural review. And again, then I'm awful, I, you know, I think our our architectural review process needs to be reinforced. But but, you know, so, yeah, I do want to qualify my prior comment in that realizing that large PDs like Patrick Square, it's not going to be possible to have a complete picture of what the ultimate project is going to be at the at the time in which they're seeking approval. And maybe Chris's, you know, document is a is a way forward, I, you know, on some of that. But but I do think the small, compact prod parcels downtown, we need to have a complete understanding of what's being built there. Not the details, not the specs, but the massing, the form, the the character, the buffers, the setbacks, the landscape, the the parking, all that should be clearly defined.
Okay, Chris, I think you put your hand back up.
Yeah, in my experience with the PD in in the city of Greenville was it is tied to the BAR. And we, we had several meetings with the city. I mean, we had to submit a complete document. It included a site plan, landscape plan, floor plans, elevations, a 3D model. And we had to present to neighborhoods. And we could not get the permit without BAR approval. It had a lot of teeth.
I think, right now, I think if Todd, Todd, are you still on the call? I think some of those things have to occur currently.
Yeah, the the two things that Christine mentioned that we don't have in our ordinance but have been applied, even though they're not written in the ordinance, are the mandatory meeting with neighborhoods and the mandatory BAR review. The last several PD applications that have come through, we have, or the planning commission has suggested that they do a BAR review. That's not BAR approval, but they, you know, it was help the process to know how and where and if the any proposal deviated basically our standards. And in every case, the applicant, either at the suggestion of the planning commission or because they knew it was important, had individual and often multiple meetings with the neighborhoods, surrounding neighborhoods. Again, that's not codified in the ordinance, but it's the modus operandi. Everything else that Christine mentioned is already in our ordinance and in the process, what we require prior to even, it is pretty far along before we even bring it to the planning commission because they've got they've got to do a fair amount of work to for us to feel like that they're they're going to be able to meet the standards that the city has set. And then from there, the planning commission, and then ultimately council says, well, the ordinance gives us a lot of latitude, and here's where we're going to flex our muscle. Here's, here's what we're going to require for this particular PD. And it doesn't have to be in the ordinance because y'all have that ability on any plan development to make whatever requirements you want. But but if you, you know, looking at our existing adopted ordinance, it's a pretty substantive list of content that is required. Oh, the other thing that Christine mentioned that we don't require, though, in every case, we've had them are 3D models. We we just have renderings and that, but in every case, they've done 3D modeling of what the site's going to look like. I think everybody does that now, just as a matter of course. But so anyway, that that's your question.
Yes, thank you. David has his hand back up.
I would say, let's get Greenville's PD ordinance and let's compare line item by line on them, how we measure up to that because the process Chris describes does not, I've not witnessed that in any capacity here in the city. So so I would like to see the Greenville PD ordinance and and frankly, adopt it as a as a baseline. I mean, yes, we want to allow flexibility and that's what a PD does. And in fact, there's all different kinds of ways in which PDs can be employ flexibility. We can get you know, land development or or landscape features, we could contributions to city public space, height variances for other kinds of ways to remediate the impact of scale and form. You know, providing other amenities for the city, putting sidewalks in, putting transit stops. There's all kinds of ways in which you can be creative with PDs that allow people to go beyond the kind of formulaic, prescriptive approach that a typical zoning ordinance does that yields a better result for both the property owner and developer and the city. And so so, you know, we want to allow flexibility, but we also want to have a baseline minimum set of standards for what we look at and 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 what is done that is rigorous. And again, I, I mean, all, we all can look to Greenville as a very nearby neighbor model for for doing things pretty well, relatively speaking.
Fran?
So just before we get to nine thirty and lose our time, I'm going to recommend or suggest we go back to the issue of the two acres. Maybe rewrite it the way David said that, no limit on acreage in commercial districts and have a vote on that, whatever it ends up being, so we can have that for PC. And then this this discussion about the the PD requirements, I think we need to come back to this. This is so much bigger than than that. But I think it's crucial that we give some, even if we vote no, but we give some decision on the two acre, whether it's, you know, the suggestion that we have no acreage requirement in the commercial for PD. But I think we need to leave here with some some vote or some something to pass on to PC that's meeting before we meet again. And the other things are important, but I think that's crucial for tonight, for this morning, rather.
Shannon?
I'd agree with Fran. And then I also, you guys last time talked about Greer as a model, and I have their PD guidelines and I can share them. I can pull them up and share them on the screen with you guys if you want to look at those after you talk about the two acres.
Okay. And then David, did you raise your hand again?
Yeah, I mean, I'm fine. I think one of the ways we could expedite it, Fran, is to is to eliminate the two acres but require Board of Architectural Review approval as a part of the PD process in the CM districts. And that would be a, that would be a simple edit for now until we revise the the, you know, the PD if we get to that point.
Okay, so in section I, already we have as number four, it says PDs in an overlay district, so require bar approval. So let's make that PDs in in commercial overlay and future catalyst areas shall require bar approval. But I think we should, so into Fran's point, yeah, I I agree completely. What I'd like to do is say, let, you know, if we are willing to do that is say, we want to, you know, we're making the recommendation that, yeah, we're comfortable with the two acres coming out that in section I, we want to expand that a bit to cover commercial areas, those other things that we've already talked about. But we also make a recommendation that PC begin to look at a rewrite or major revision of our PD requirements and our PD ordinance. Potentially based on Greenville, Greer, or other appropriate areas. And I don't think we don't need to specify that. But the more I'm looking at it, the more I want to do like a complete zero based approach of our entire zoning ordinance across the board. But I think, would we be comfortable with that? So first item is, as a group, I think, would we be comfortable with that? So first item is, as a group, um, any objections to us? Uh, making a recommendation to PC that we, we are a statement that. The Land Use Development Group is comfortable with the removal of the two acre requirement. But would like it to be specific to commercially zoned areas. In other words, instead of it just reading a minimum of four acres, it would say. PDs in commercially zoned districts can be of any size, and then keep the. However, must be a minimum of four acres in R twelve and R twenty um neighborhoods. Any objections to that as statement recommendation number one for PC? Okay, hearing none. Um, recommendation two, um. Would be that we expand the language in section I where it, where it references catalyst and overlay districts. Just to say in commercially zoned districts. And then that way, we make sure we're covered, because right now, we don't have these, these overlays and catalyst areas aren't in place yet. So if we say, for example, number four, PDs in commercially zoned. Uh, areas, overlay districts, catalyst, whatever we wanna call it. But ensure that we, we, we say commercial zoned districts. Uh, in that language, since the catalyst areas don't currently exist as a recommendation. Does that make sense? All right, any objections to that? All right, then the third piece would be that planning commission begin consideration of. Um, rewriting our PD ordinance. Um. And we might base that off other model communities. And information that we get uh as we continue to move forward, the um. For example, the redevelopment process for Uptown might give us, you know, some ideas about the how we do things. Process that David's talking about. But in other words, just look at. Revising or rewriting our PD ordinance as a, as a third recommendation to planning commission. Any objections to that? All right, does that cover everything?
Bob, but just one suggestion now to, to maybe facilitate. I'd like to hear from maybe Elaine and Larry since they're on PC.
Yeah, Lane had her hand up, so.
I think this is cleaner for goes up as three independent items, though. That first one is separated from two and three.
That, that's why, that's why I did them, and that, that was my intention in doing them as one, two, three. Elaine?
So I, I like your idea of, of just rewriting the entire PD ordinance. I just wanted to bring one thing to your attention. So I don't think we, I think we don't wanna fail to, to look at the entire process for PD, and this is one that I've had a concern about. And it's um the failure to begin, failure to progress, and failure to complete. There's the language for that at the very end of the um ordinance is related to PD, and. I know, for example, there's a, a, a project right now that was to be done in three phases, and the second and third phases have not been done. But the PD ordinance said they would be finished by two thousand and fourteen. So nothing's happened. They're still sitting out there like that, and there's. One of the early ones was, had at least components that were not finished either. So. I'd like for us to strengthen that, rather than saying the um. Uh, the planning commission may rezone the property or, or go back to the original zoning. If that's not done, I think we need to. Pay close attention to that and make sure we, we don't leave PDs hanging, like we have several of them right now. It says the, the planning commission can do it, but if somebody hadn't gone back and, like me, had gone back and looked at those particular ones. We wouldn't know that some of them hadn't been completed.
Yeah. Yeah, I was looking at the zoning map, and I saw one that there's nothing on that property that was like approved in two thousand eight or something like that. That there's nothing there. So, yeah, I agree. We, we probably need to look at that as a, as another area. And that could, that definitely would be part of the entire, you know, revision of the PD ordinance.
Thank you.
All right, anything else?
Um, I have one thing to respond to Elaine. Um, the, the PD is very interesting in terms of. I know when, when we did it for Clemson I, it was an existing PD. And we had to go through an amended PD, so that, the thing with the PD is when it's finished by the architect and the engineers. It is filed with the state of South Carolina. And if you're gonna change it, it's, you have to go through the whole process again. So it, it's not something that ten years go by and, oh, I can do what I want now. You have to go through that entire process again. So it's still, even though things aren't happening. Um, it essentially becomes a law that's in place. So it still has the project there. Um, and, and owners can't deviate from that, and if the property is sold, it ha- and they want to amend it. You go through what's called an amended PD process, which is essentially like doing it all over again.
Yeah.
So there is protection there.
Yeah.
Christine, would that, would that amendment include um, uh, starting back up on one that had failed to complete? And the deadline had passed. So if they wanna start that back up, is that what you're saying? It would have to come back through the process for reapproval?
They would, if, if they are going to change it, if they wanna start over and change, they have to go through the entire process again. Planning Commission, BAR. I mean, it's a complete, almost a complete project by the time it's presented. And the city of Greenville will tell you, it's a tremendous amount of work, and it might be rejected. So there, what it did for us was really make us follow the rules. We were not trying to get anything by the city, um, because we knew, I mean, it was a very expensive process. For our client, and we wanted to be as efficient as we could and follow the rules and not have to go through. Um, a major variance. I mean, bait and switch was never in the picture.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's difficult to bait and switch on a, on a PD. Now, again, the thing that you gotta rely on is the way that it's written and the way that it's approved, because it, it's there to allow for some creative development. Is that, you know, planning commission and, and council can approve it. And, you know, once it's approved, they do, you know, most, they, they have, you have to execute on that. Unless council or, you know, city staff is just asleep at the wheel and doesn't, you know, allow something to happen. Um, so, again, I, I like the idea and I like the process, um. You know, but there's this balance that you have to have between allowing developers to come forward with creative. Ideas about how to develop and having things, you know, regulated in the right way so that. You, you know, the process that Christine just, just described um occurs. So like, for example, Elaine. You know, put, just making sure, because the idea, I think, the way that the PD, the, you know, law works is that. If it hasn't been executed. In the timeframe outlined, then it's supposed to revert back to the original zoning. And it's like, you know, just a matter of probably planning commission staff going back and saying, hey, this wasn't executed. This was R twelve or RM three or whatever before. It's back to that. Um, you know, for the, if you, if you haven't executed uh by then, so.
You're right, Bob. There's a, there is a um, a failure to start component of the ordinance. That um, there has to be some activity. Now, you can take a packet of milliken. Uh, there has not been a year that we haven't had multiple meetings, reviewed drawings, revised. Um, the interchange hammered out details on the, on rest of.
Right.
Park, all those kind of things. Uh, so they haven't started pushing dirt, but uh they have not been inactive, and so they're still.
Right.
They certainly have one PD that nothing has happened on it in eighteen years, and it's pretty much. The uh, but that ordinance was written before we had a PD.
Right.
And then to Christine's point that um, uh, we have, if you look in our ordinance, there are. Guidelines for how we amend it. Um, if, for example, uh, that um, Patrick Square has. Uh, a lot.
I think we lost Todd.
Sorry, uh, but if, going back to amending and a PD that, example, that um. When um Patrick Square was getting down to finalizing some of the plans for their commercial district. They moved a building seven feet one direction, didn't change the square footage. That does not require. Uh, a go, that was done at the staff level. Uh, it's spelled out in there that you can reduce the density. Uh, to a certain, you have a certain flexibility that is at the staff level. If you increase the density. Um, you know, it has to go back through approval, and it's not a do-over for us that uh we. We bring it back to the planning commission uh and council to approve the amendment if we felt it was significant enough. Or if the ordinance triggers it. So the mechanisms are in place, not saying you like them, or you don't wanna change them or eliminate them. But uh all the, everything we're talking about is already in the ordinance.
Yeah, so, all right, well, lots, lots to think about. We're, I think we've got three good, you know, steps, recommendations to think about to send forward to planning commission. Um, we will, uh, if there's nothing else, we will, Elaine, did you just not take your hand out, or did you put your hand back up? Um, so we will, let's, um. Pending what happens with the uh, the other two meetings, we'll probably just try to vote by, for the implementation committee. Vote by email, uh, but stay tuned for whether or not we'll have a meeting next week. I think we're in a place um. Where we're, we're good with this committee. Um, let's uh have our next meeting be. Maybe we'll take two weeks off, um, unless, unless you hear otherwise for some emergency situation. Um, but uh just stay tuned uh there. Implementation Committee, we will try not to meet and try to vote by um. Vote by email on anything that comes forward from business and economic development or the other groups. Okay? Sound good? It is nine thirty-two, not too bad. So uh, if there's nothing else, we will uh adjourn. Thank you all. Enjoy the next couple of weeks. Let me know if you need anything. David, where are you?
Just clarification. So then our next meeting is, is Wednesday, the fourteenth.
Yeah, that would be correct, yep. Yeah, cuz we've got, we've got planning commission, we, we are gonna have, you know, people that are, that are out of town. Planning commission's meeting, we've approved, you know, we approved today the uh, the recommendations. So we're, we're in a bit of a uh, of a holding pattern. We'll know more like after the twenty-ninth of what planning commission does. You know, we might, we might have some more things. We'll have more information about the uh, about the Uptown Charette process. Because I think those RFPs are due like the twenty-ninth or thirtieth. So those will go to council. Um, as well, we may, um, you know, talk about those if uh, you know, depending on what we. What we get, that might be something that we say, hey, we need to have a meeting before the fourteenth. Um, so, like I said, let's plan on the fourteenth unless something comes up that we have to, we have to meet sooner. Okay?
And what I will do, Christine, if you send me those Greenville guidelines, I'll go through those and Greer and ours and put together a comparison for you guys. So that, that we can have that ready to go and look at. And when that's done, I'll email it to you so you have some time to look at it before the fourteenth.
All right, Shannon, thank you.
Shannon, can we, do you think we could have that before the planning commission meeting on next week? Is that too tight?
Let me look at what Christine, Christine, is that something you can send me today?
Yeah, I'd say.
Let me look at that and tell you tomorrow, Elaine. Let me take a stab at it and see how long it's gonna take me.
Okay, and if nothing else, send us the links to those two, so we can at least look at them before our meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, cuz I have a feeling putting together a comparison of those, that's gonna take some, that's gonna take.
Right. That's why I was thinking two weeks.
Yeah. At the very least, you'll have those to look at, cuz that, I don't think that's something that, you know, the, the rewrite, the revision potentially. That's gonna take some, take some time, you know, but uh, but to start getting that information out, that would be, that would be good. All right, anything else? Okay, thank you all. Have a good rest of your day, and uh, well, good fourth and all that kinda stuff. Bye.
Bye.